Members of the Foundation Board in our Campaign Committee. So as I introduce you, if you want to stand real quick to be recognized. And then President Mike Rossi serves as our Vice President. Jim Okenak is our Secretary. Dottie Stafford is a member of the A+ Campaign Committee and also does a lot with our public relations. Heidi Cosar is a member of our Board, obviously, and our School Board, Foundation Liaison. Bill Palmer has been serving as a member of our Campaign Committee. And of course Judy Swiger is a key member of our Foundation Board. And then I also have to recognize Jessica Bolman, who is really doing a lot of behind and seeing work and really is, she gets most of the credit for getting all the work done and keeping everyone alive. So, thank you to all of them for coming tonight. This grant is a direct result of early success achieved through the A+ Campaign for the Glendale County District. Most of you have probably heard about the A+ Campaign in the news articles that have been out recently. While the A+ Campaign is still ongoing, the Foundation Board voted for immediate partial funding of the Global Classrooms Initiative, one of the original purposes of the campaign. This grant will purchase and install interactive whiteboard systems and student response devices in every junior high classroom over the summer months. Please note that the Foundation and Campaign Committee are continuing their efforts on the A+ Campaign as we have more work to do to reach our original goals for academics, arts, and athletics. Greater Latrobe Partners, an education foundation, made a promise to the community to be good stewards of every dollar contributed to the foundation. Tonight, we are holding true to that promise by the torn Greater Latrobe Junior High students have access to cutting-edge technology that will improve their educational outcomes and maintain a competitive edge in a global environment. President Mainz and Superintendent Swiger, it is my pleasure to present this check for $226,000 to fund a global classroom initiative at the junior high school.
I was going to say publicly, I appreciate all of the hard work that all of these people have done initially, and I know it's ongoing. And this initial contribution will do wonderful things for our junior high technology, so thanks to all of them.
And there'll be many more of these to come.
I don't need you in the picture. How is that?
Big smile. Did you get it? I did. And can we get a picture with Bill Palmer and Heidi? Do we have time? I don't want to...
Heidi and Bill Palmer and Dottie and Jim Okenak.
All right. Just one photo and then we'll get on. Sorry. Thank you. No, no, please.
You can choose your part.
I'm getting in the back.
You looking bad?
Somebody else. Happy. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you, yes, very much, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. To have to the Board, I'd like to thank all of you, the Foundation Board, for all of your hard work, and we get to enjoy the benefit. But this is such a wonderful day to see money being spent this way for the education of our students, to better the education of our students, to give them the technology that they need to be motivated to learn. And I thank you all so very much and for all of your help, and we certainly do appreciate everything. Thank you so much. Enrollment Report, Dr. Tucker.
Yes, next month, we will review the class size because we are just closing up the figures for kindergarten warrant as well as retention. So we want to make certain the figures are as close as they possibly can.
Okay. We actually look forward to that. On your agenda for next week will be a resolution to approve a tuition duty for the 2013-2014 school year Olympia rate, car list, water, garden support fees are under car list. And also, if we receive the tuition rates, we're going to approve them next week. So that would be on your agenda if they receive. The Curriculum Committee Minutes of the April 23 meeting are item number two in your packet. And the next meeting of the Curriculum Committee will be June 25th at 5:30 p.m., and of course, all are valed for that. Curriculum Committee Minutes, a lot of important things on there that are going on. I'd like to mention rankings from the Pittsburgh Business Times, and we assume we're among the worst, ranked GLSD 18 out of 106 local districts. And GLSH, the high school, ranked 57 out of 687 high schools, including public, charter, and magnet high schools. I thought that was wonderful. We are also partnering with Steetland Hill College for a college in that classroom this year, and that's something new. They're going to give four college credits for students in AP Biology, AP Chemistry, and AP Physics. With, I think AP Physics gets eight credits, is that right, Doctor Jemmer? Yes, it is. And to receive all eight credits for the AP Physics course, students must first take the regular physics course. And the cost to students is $220 for four credits, and that's amazing that they can come here and give that a college credit for that kind of price. And that's a real benefit for our students, I believe. The rest of the stuff, I think you can read on your own, and of course, if you have any questions, please bring them up at the May 28 meeting or call. Did you want to add anything to that? Also, on your agenda next week were to be a resolution to approve a 2013 Extended School Year Education Services with new story at the rate of $100, $180 per day for students. And that ends my report, and I will turn the page to Mrs. Oliver for final.
The first two items, the Treasurer's Report and Payment of Bill, which was budgetary transfers, are normal parts of our agenda. The Finance Committee Minutes are in your packet, and for the Curriculum Committee Minutes, and we will be meeting again Wednesday, June 5 at 10 at the Admin Building. And we will talk much more later about what our meeting was about on May 28. We'll have to appoint the 511 tax collectors, designate depositories, reappoint the School District Treasurer, authorize to invest funds. And we're looking at approving the City of Latrobe's request for disposition of tax revenue records, that's item four in your packet. Is there anything that you want to...
Just if I might add, right now, I currently have our local auditor reviewing the dates to confirm that, you know, nothing is being destroyed, it has not been audited or finalized. So some of those dates may change before the 28th, depending on feedback.
Okay. And we have a presentation about the proposed General Fund Operating Budget that Mr. Watson is going to do now. And that General Fund Operating Budget will be part of our agenda on the 28th, as will approving a three-year agreement with Corner Wyland Harris P.C. for audit services, which is item number five in our packet.
Mrs. Swiger's going to join me in this presentation, we're going to sort of team up on this. I was told to speak very slowly because there's not a hockey game on, and nobody's in a rush to get out of here. So I hope you're comfortable. They're still playing their game. They're still paying.
As referenced last month, this is our post-final presentation with the actual vote on the primary voting at the May 28 meeting. One of the things that we believe was important with this presentation was looking at the history of our expenditures in the district. And as we know, in the last few years, our revenues from the state and federal level have decreased. One of the things that we repeatedly speak about, however, in all of our presentations is Peasars Retirement. And I know that all of you read about Peasars in the newspaper, Peasars standing for Pennsylvania State Employee Retirement System. So when we reference retirement in school districts, we are referencing Peasars. They are interchangeable in our language. The other thing that you need to know is, this is not something that a school board, a school district chooses to participate or not participate in. Peasars is something that is the retirement system mandated by the state, and the amount that we contribute to Peasars on an annual basis is dictated to the school district by the state. This board sitting here does not have control over how much we contribute or not contribute to Peasars. In the school year 2009-10, exclusive, meaning not including, Peasars Retirement, our district's expenditures were $47,196,322, actual expenditures excluding Peasars. In 2010-11, the following school year, the district's actual expenditures excluding Peasars Retirement was $46,950,320. Referencing an actual decrease in actual expenditures that the district spent on everything except Peasars, which we have no control over, we had a decrease of $246,200, or half a percent decrease in what the district spent on everything else. In 2011-12, which some of you were sitting here at that time, our expenditures excluding Peasars decreased $1,472,155, or over a 3% decrease. And if all of you remember, that year, we had a budget presentation in the L.A.S. Auditorium, we put together a plan, we actually furloughed teachers that year, because this was the year where we had a significant decrease in state funding to all districts across the state. And if you recall that, it was a very difficult time having to cut over $2 million in expenditures. So you'll see that 3% decrease from 10-11 to 11-12 in actual expenditures that the district spent on everything excluding Peasars. In 12-13, you see a slight increase. And when you think about having done those deep cuts in 11-12, you can understand why in 2012-13, excluding Peasars, there was a slight increase in expenditure costs of $826,603, or an increase of 1.8%. The proposed budget for next year, the one that we're presenting to you this evening, excluding Peasars, shows a decrease from 12-13 of 0.76%, or $353,617. So our proposed budget for 2013-14 is $45,951,951, nine... Thank you. We got it. Bottom line is, is it's decreasing 3/4 of a percent from the 12-13 budget. So when you look at this history, and I think it's a really important piece to present to you this evening, because as I preface this entire piece of this presentation, Peasars is something that us sitting here have no control over, zero. And when you look at our expenditures from 2009-10 to 2013-14, through a lot of hard work of everyone sitting here, as well as administrators, Mr. Watson, and all of the people who contribute to this budget process, and that's building principals and teachers and everyone, we have had an actual decrease in our expenditures in the amount of 2.64%, or $1,245,171 in the last four years. I think that what we wanted to present tonight is that something that we have no control over is impacting our budget significantly. But I believe that we collectively have done a very good job of trying to decrease those actual expenditures through RFPs and other processes that have enabled us to actually decrease our expenditures over a four-year process. Mr. Watson's going to go into a little bit of history on Peasars and an explanation for those who don't, because we've had several conversations with people who don't recognize that it is not something that we, that it's something that we choose to participate in, or that we can bargain those amounts. It is not, and that is something we wanted to make very clear. So I will...
Thank you, Mrs. Swiger. So just to continue along the line, what I wanted to talk about next is just to explain a little bit about what Peasars Retirement actually is. And as Mrs. Swiger said, it stands for the Public School Employees Retirement System. It's a funding, the funding method for the retirement system is a state law. It's funded by three areas, okay? You have an employee contribution, which is a fixed amount. You have an employer contribution, which is, it varies depending on need. And we'll see later in the presentation the impact it's going to have in years to come. And then the third spoke of that, the third funding mechanism is investments. And over the past several years, investments haven't gone very well as the economy goes. I'm sure everybody's been impacted. Because we've had very poor returns on our investments, that's what's sort of led to the employer contribution spike that we're experiencing now and we're continuing to see for the years to come. I just put a couple important dates up there. The system became law in July 18 of 1917. In 1983, there were some adjustments that were made to the employees' level of their contribution. 2001, there was a new TE class introduced. 2011, there was a new TE and TEF class introduced. Could go into a lot of discussion about what all of that means, but I just wanted to note that those have significant implications on the benefit and the level of benefit that everybody receives. So those are, those were extremely important decisions that were made that impacted everybody's retirement, as I mentioned, the level of benefit that is received, which is also contributing to some of the issues that we're experiencing today. You can visit the websites listed on this PowerPoint. Also, I don't know if anybody grabbed our handouts that cover this PowerPoint presentation and should take with you and visit that website, there's a lot of good information on that. As Mrs. Swiger had mentioned and stressed, there's no local control. This is not subject to collective bargaining. We can't sit down at the table with our bargaining units or colleagues and negotiate this in or out of anybody's benefit. This is something that's dictated by the state, so there's no local control. State government dictates Peasars and the benefit levels, not the local school boards, not the local administrators, not the local teachers, or any of your other bargaining units. They do not control that. So this is sort of what's coming down the road, and I know you're all well aware of this, but just wanted to do a real quick historical look back and then look a little bit ahead. In 2005-6, the employer rate was 4.69%. The net employer cost was $557,000. The reason I say net employer cost is the state is obligated to reimburse us roughly 50% of our retirement costs. Okay? So double that, and that would be our total expenditure line, and then we receive 50% of that back in subsidy from the state, so the net cost was $557,000. This current year, the rates jumped up to 12.36%. Now, this has been happening over the last several years, but currently we're at 12.36%. The net employer cost of that is $1,327,465. I always like to look at the percentages, so I don't have them for that particular one, but I'll get to. What we're projecting for next year, 2013-14, the rate's going to 16.93%. The net employer cost is 1.8. So we're going from $557,000 to 1.8. That's a 230% increase. That is very, very significant. I'm sorry, 230% increase from the 2005-6 to 2013-14 school year. If you look at the increase from the 2012-13 to 2013-14, that's a 38% increase, also significant. It's projected to go to 2022-23 to 30.93%. It's also projected, once it gets there, it's projected to stay there until 2034-2035. So it's not like it's going to hit and then drop back down. The net employer cost there is $4.3 million. That is a significant increase, and it's a significant funding obligation that we need to come up with a solution for, unless the state decides to amend or revise the way that the Peasars spending is outlined. That is a 686% increase from 2005-6, and a 138% increase from 2013-14. It's enormous. So we have, we have a lot of work ahead of us. Hopefully, our state government will step forward and come up with a solution that we can all live with, because I don't know how you make up that difference. Okay, this chart, basically, what we, is what you've seen, we're trying to show that if you remove the Peasars cost from our budget, we believe we've done a very good job of controlling our budget and actually decreasing our budget, of those items that we can actually control. The bars in the black are total expenses, including Peasars. The bars in the orange are total expenses when you back that Peasars out. So you can see there's a significant difference. If you follow the orange, it goes down 9, 10, 10, 11, 11, 12, up slightly, 12, 13, and then we're projecting another decrease in 2013-14, as Mrs. Swiger reviewed those numbers previously. If anybody has any questions or comments as I'm going through, don't hesitate to chime in. Mrs. Oliver.
I have a comment, just in case anyone is suggesting that we haven't let the community know about this problem that we're having with Peasars. You should all be reminded of the session that we had, what was it, four years ago, when we had the head of Peasars come in and do a program that was attended by a lot of GLEA members, a lot of members of the public were here, and this was all explained at that time.
Right.
So that anyone in the public who says that they don't know about this, didn't know it was going to happen, is simply not staying informed with the activities that this board has engaged in.
Absolutely. Mr. Clay is the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania School Employees Retirement System. He did come out, we invited him, the graciousness of the company, he presented all of this. So this isn't something that is just new. This is something we've been experiencing over the last several years, and unfortunately, we're looking to continue to experience.
This is also, to deal on Kay's statement, this is also something that, when the public doesn't know this, and they come to us thinking we have control over this, and they come up to our doorstep and give us these scenarios that they want us to, we can't do it. They're not traveling far enough. They need to go to Harrisburg.
That's correct.
Okay? Don't get off the bus in Latrobe. Get off the bus in Harrisburg, because they're the ones that have the control over, and we have nothing.
Yep, exactly right.
I have a question, maybe a dumb question. Because a third of the funding for Peasars has been messed up by the market.
Yes.
If the market comes back, do we get some of this, rent this increase to our contribution?
Actually, unless the market comes back significantly, the actuarial people who do these projections, they project that actually an 8% return on investment, okay? Now, that's something that's been trended for, you know, they use long trends, okay? We've actually over the past several years experienced a decrease, a loss, so they always use that 8%. So yes, I guess what, if we, you know, begin to get a 15%, 20% return on investment, that could potentially impact it, but I would say slightly, and it's not going to erase it. The only thing that truly could erase this, I believe, and I think we all believe, is the, having the actual benefit revised, from a defined benefit, more defined contribution.
But the problem is you still have to deal with the village rates, and you still have to pump that in somehow, to work that out, to offset that.
Yes.
And we're going on both sides, like we have been doing over the last several years, to balance that in some sort of way, so that the total impact's not being felt. But at some point, after a few more years, it's just, there's not going to be a way to offset that without totally decimating the district.
Yeah, and we don't have the option of not paying it. We are legally bound to meet our obligations.
Yeah, but that's the misinformation that comes out in the media from people making, you know, statements.
We also don't have any control of the benefits.
Right, not a thing.
That Dan's talking about.
Right.
So we're required to pay this money, and we, it's the old accountability issue.
Right.
We have no way of getting them to be accountable to us and to say, well, no, we need to change this benefit.
And even what Rhonda, earlier this evening, she was mentioning several bills out there that are ways-to-ways funds. It's not going to, it's not going to be fund property plus funds, it's going to be some melding, or maybe a piece of both, and they're going to see how they're going to hurt us. And the difference will be some sort of melding or something like that, and they're still not going to even us out to the point where we can catch up.
Right.
So it's not really a catch-up kind of situation here at all.
No, it's not. And just another piece to add is, you know, if you read up on this, and I know Mrs. Swiger has read a lot about this, it's, the issue's even being compounded a little bit more by, because of a lot of the funding from the state and federal level and the increased cost of Peasars, a lot of districts have had to cut back on staff, okay? Well, when you reduce that staff, you're reducing one of the funding levels that proceed. So you have less people paying into it, so you're even underfunding in by greater amounts. That's another issue.
Right. And according to Rhonda's legislative report tonight, it doesn't sound like her coming from a legislative point.
It doesn't seem like anything's going to happen this year. Now, I will tell you, if I go back a couple of slides here real quick, and you've seen the 2011 new TE and TEF classes introduced. When they introduced those classes, anybody hired after July 1 of 2011 now is required to pay higher rate towards there. And it's also a sliding scale. Every three years, they look at that. They say, what are our return on investments? How much more do we need to make up? And then they'll slide that individual, how much they have to contribute. So they've taken steps to help to address the issue, but obviously, they haven't taken enough steps. So that's why Governor Corbett submitted his proposal, but it doesn't seem like it's getting much support at this time. So more to come on all of that. Well, when you reduce that staff, you're reducing one of the funding levels that proceeds. So you have less people paying into it, so you're even underfunding in by greater amounts. That's another issue.
Right.
And according to Rhonda's legislative report tonight, it doesn't sound like her coming from a legislative point.
It doesn't seem like anything's going to happen this year. Now, I will tell you, if I go back a couple of slides here real quick, and you've seen the 2011 new TE and TF classes introduced. When they introduced those classes, anybody hired after July 1, 2011 now is required to pay higher rate towards there. And it's also a sliding scale. Every three years, they look at that. They say, what are our return on investments? How much more do we need to make up? And then they'll slide that individual, how much they have to contribute. So they've taken steps to help to address the issue, but obviously, they haven't taken enough steps. So that's why Governor Corbett submitted his proposal, but it doesn't seem like it's getting much support this time. So more to come on all of that. Okay, so again, that's just a chart, another way of showing the same information. Okay, so budgetary amendments, I just wanted to go back, if you remember our presentation in January, there were some items that we did not know about, so just wanted to make you aware of those. There are still several items that we don't know about. State funding, I'd assume level funding. If you look at Governor Corbett's proposal, he's calling for an increase in basic education subsidy, but he's underfunding retirement. Basically, he's saying that if the Senate, House adopt his proposed changes to PESRs, which, as Dr. Walker mentioned, doesn't seem like they're going to, he'll be able to increase basic ed. So it's kind of his way of trying to gain support. Doesn't look like that's going to happen, so what we anticipate is he'll take the money that he was going to increase the basic ed subsidy that actually goes towards education, reduce that back to level, and slide that over to the retirement piece, which he's currently underfunding his proposal. Okay, so this budget assumes level funding. We believe that, and anticipate that's what we will get, but it's still unknown, because there's a lot of game to be played, a lot of discussions to be had, I should say.
Well, you're right.
Federal funding. Okay, sequestration, everybody's heard about sequestration and read about that. We anticipate our federal funds to be reduced by about 8.2 percent, that's about $105,000. So again, it's not just at the state, it's at the federal level as well. Special education, special education's always an unknown. We're using our current AEMs, but as Dr. Soltis will tell you, you have one or two students with high needs, you know, that can really change that picture of what you anticipate that budget to be. Student enrollment, we're assuming flat. Historically, we have about, you know, 4,150 to 4,200 students, so that's a safe assumption. But if we have a higher enrollment in kindergarten, or a bubble class that comes through at the elementary level, there may be some additional discussion on staffing that may need to occur. Budgetary amendments, we originally anticipated healthcare at about 10 percent. Again, we use Highmark's 10 to 15-year trend, actually came at 3 percent. We had a very good year of claims, so we were able to reduce from 10 percent down to 3 percent. 1 percent is roughly $35,000, so I think it was about $240,000. We were able to reduce that budget amount by $245,000. Our retirements, we didn't know if we had any retirements. They were required to submit their letter by March 31st. We received 13 letters, so we were able to reduce through retirements. Now, all of them will be replaced, but you're replacing a higher page with an entry-level instructor, so that's over $300,000, and we were able to reduce that budget line by about $300,000. Okay, so summary of projected expenditure changes. And board members in your packet, there's a more detailed budget report that I presented in the past, that you're welcome to look at at your leisure. But we're looking at a projected increase of $664,000. PESR's retirement accounts for $1,018,000 of that. So yes, all of the other areas reflect a decrease, okay? And all of the other areas make up a decrease of about $353,000. Okay, so PESRs, it's going up by over $1 million. We're only projecting a $664,000, so again, all of the other areas combined reflect a decrease. Summary of our projected revenues, low revenue, we're projecting to go up by $189,000. I'll tell you, this is one area that, you know, is a positive. You know, the assessed value we received from the accounting of all of our properties, it went up by about $2.6 million this year. So that's good, that shows development, and that shows, you know, you've heard the economy's slowly recovering, that's what everybody said, so we're seeing that. That accounts for about $195,000 in additional real estate tax naturally. No millage increase, just it's built in, okay? So that's a good thing. State, again, we're looking at a $461,000 increase, but again, I say level funding, because any dollar that the state gives you for education, we're anticipating level funding. This is all retirement, okay? So it all goes to offset the retirement cost, that's that 50 percent I was talking, roughly 50 percent I was mentioning. Federal, going down by $54,000. Again, sequestration, it's actually a lot larger than that. A lot of our federal dollars comes through the intermediate unit, which is reflected under local revenue, so there's a portion of the IDA funds that show a decrease, so that is just a decrease in Title I and Title II, because that's what falls into that specific budget line item. But that $54,000 has resulted in sequestration. And then the other, the $266,000 on the expense side, we no longer have any laptop leases, we've transitioned to a BYOD environment with some lease-to-own options. That's helped to control our costs. We use the budget as, on the revenue side, to opt it as more of an accounting industry, $266,000, that's been wiped out. I won't bore you with exactly how that works.
Thank you.
So the total change, we're looking at an increase of about $329,000 in revenues to offset that $664,000 increase in expenditures. So another piece, so we talked about retirement and the issues that we're having on the expense side. On the revenue side, what we're having the issue, or we have concerns with state and federal funding, as you can see, it's declining significantly. The black bars are state and federal funding, including the PESRs reimbursement. The orange bars are the state and federal funding with removing the PESR's reimbursement, okay? Because that PESR's amount that we receive as subsidy reimbursement goes directly to PESRs, it doesn't actually go into our educational programs. So you can see the difference. You know, you'll hear Governor Corbett say he's increasing his funding to public ed. That's because he's required to fund 50 percent of the retirement. It doesn't come to us that we can use, again, benefit education, it goes strictly to offset retirement costs. So you can see, from 9, 10 to 10, 11, we saw about a $200,000 decrease, which was about a 1 percent decrease. And then from 10, 11 to 11, 12, that's when we were cut $1.8 million, it's about 10 percent. So that was the year we experienced a significant reduction in state and federal funding. 2012-13 and 2013-14, you can see they're slightly different, but they're pretty much level funded. There's no significant, no additional monies that we anticipate receiving. Again, just another way to show the same information. So we just thought it was important to go, and I'll try and flow through this part rather quickly, but it is important. What we've done over the past four years, you know, we've talked about, you know, we've made all of these cuts. How have we, what have we done to continue to operate? Finance department, okay? We've reduced operating expenditures by $250,000 per year, and I have that bold in an underline, because I think that's extremely important, okay? This isn't a one-time savings. Things that we've done, RFPs, we've, you know, we've gone out for, for electricity procurement, natural gas, light, dental vision, workman's comp, banking, coffeeers, postage, tax collections, audit services, you'll see tonight, those are all reflected in there. Every kind of service comes up, we review it, and we've been able, we've been successful in reducing those costs, because, you know, those are the areas we'd rather control those costs, and they have minimal impact on actual instruction, and that's what we're looking to. Technology, reduced operating expenditures, again, this is per year, by $650,000 per year. We sort of realigned how we structured our technology support services that have resulted in significant reduction to that specific budget line. In addition to that, we've developed a BYOD environment, that's helped to reduce our laptop lease costs. Printing, you know, we've eliminated the number, reduced the number of printers, helped to control paper, et cetera. ECATS Academy, that's another example of the way that we've, you know, been able to pull some of our students, or retain some of our students, keeping them from going to cyber education, doing that sort of in-house. Special education, autistic and life skills. We've reduced operating expenditures by over $50,000 per year, which is important, and that's great, but we've also added over $100,000 per year in additional revenue, tuition. We have room in our classes that we actually have students from other surrounding districts to come and pay tuition for. So more than offsets our cost to operate those classes, I mean, it's a, it was a very good decision that was made by the school board. Transportation department, reduced operating expenditures by over $150,000 per year, plus added over $50,000 per year in additional revenue. Again, we're using a routing software package. Our buses are routed more efficiently, helps generate additional subsidy in transportation from the state, that's a benefit. We did an RFP for transportation services. You know, that savings, again, is year after year after year. So, you know, that's also very important to remember.
Just to back up one moment, I don't think the people, they don't quite understand that when somebody goes to a cyber charter, charter school, that we're writing a check to that school.
That's right.
This district is writing a check.
Anytime.
So each student that we try to bring back into ECATS, we're saving that much money every time.
Yep, it's about $75,000 a year for a regular ed student, about 14,000 for a special needs student. So yes, that's significant. Every time we're in.
Seventy-five hundred.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
That's okay.
Yeah, 7,500 for a regular ed is about, lower than 14,000 for a special needs. Thank you for pointing that out.
I care we call it dollar value, but I remember the dollar value I sourced, as soon as the.
It was over $1 million, and it's come down significantly over the past several years.
Right.
Because our enrollment to those cyber schools has gone down.
Correct.
And our enrollment at ECATS has increased.
Right.
So it's, I believe it's working. Another area, staff services. We've reduced operating expenditures by over $1 million per year. Again, this is why we're talking about the furlough teacher. We furloughed teachers. We had teachers that were furloughed, administrative positions that weren't replaced, support staff positions that were eliminated, custodial positions that were eliminated. Benefits unfortunately were reduced or eliminated for certain groups, you know, some tough decisions, but, you know, that's, that's allowed us to continue to operate, to continue to function the way that we have. Maintenance department, reduced operating expenditures by over $40,000 per year. Program review, programs have been reviewed, we've been able to recognize $90,000 per year there. Athletic, service, 25, and then we've increased our revenue by over $90,000 per year. Again, I know, you know, the parking isn't popular, but that's, the parking fee has generated some income, laptop fees have generated some income. So there are some things that we've done to try and generate. We want to control costs, but we're also looking for ways to actually bring in additional revenue, okay? Okay, future budget concerns, PESR's employer rate, we know those are coming, we've got to figure out how to continue to operate and function, even with that coming down the pipe. Future capital projects, we have a five-year rolling capital plan, we know that there are going to be some needs that will be coming eventually, we want to continue to plan for that. We are doing that, but we want to continue to keep that in our mind as we develop these budgets. State budget, federal budget allocations, the uncertainty, we don't know what we're going to receive. So we don't know if they'll continue to make cuts, or we'll see if it begins to decline no way. Act One index, the Act One index has continued to decline, actually, last year it was held level. But the amount under the index, I believe that we were at, was about 2.2 percent, which was 1.67 mils, which generates a little over half a million dollars. I mean, that's good, but that doesn't offset your PESR's increase, it doesn't even make up 50 percent of your PESR's increase. Okay, so, you know, taxing local taxpayers isn't necessarily an option for the answer, so, you know, that's a concern. Early retirement incentives, we've had an early retirement incentive each of the last three years that have allowed us, or helped us to balance our budget. We have worked in the young staff now, there's lots of new people out there who can take advantage of their retirement. You can only get it up well so many times, so I don't know how much more of that benefit that'll be in future budget years. Special education, this year we saw a reduction in our special education costs because of the way the IU's handling the IDA funding. Well, we're receiving that money upfront now, put more money in our pocket, but that's reflected in this year's budget. It's not going to be able to reduce, be reduced again next year, so we have to keep that money. Transportation, we're seeing a reduction in our transportation budget this year because of the RFP. We just went through that process. It's frozen for the first two years, but after that, you know, you'll start seeing minimal increases over the following two years, so we're not going to be able to see a reduction in transportation in future years. So recommendation, approved the proposed final budget, the amount of $49,624,186. Next steps, continue to evaluate our operating expenditures, continue to review potential revenue funding sources. Okay, and then, we just wanted to come back, because we thought it was important, just to, you know, I think that what we've been doing here as a community, as a school board, as, you know, faculty, staff, everything's been pretty impressive. You know, we've had some tough decisions to be made, but we've been able to decrease our operating cost by, you know, over $1.2 million, you know, 2.64 percent, that is pretty significant. So we just wanted to come back and point that out. Also, just mention that, again, that's less the PESR's retirement, which we have no control over, okay? Then the final slide here, these are our issues. PESR's retirement cost, okay? Increasing by $1.3 million. State and federal funding decreased by over $2 million. Those are the issues that we have to deal with, and those are the things we need to keep in the back of our mind if we're adopting budgets moving forward. We've got to continue to think long-term, and we know that PESR's just going to continue to impact us, and there's a lot of uncertainty in the state and federal funding. So like I mentioned, the school board members in your packet, there's a lot of good information, a lot of detailed information. There's also a resolution that will be asked to adopt on May 28th, we're required to adopt the proposed final budget by May 31st. We'll do it by 28th, propose that for 20 days, and then we'll dock our budget at the second meeting in the month of June. Are there any questions or final comments?
I'd just like to say, we owe Dan a big thank you, because, you know, Dan, you've done a fantastic job, and I think anybody here can see that, you know, the amount that you go after everything, and try to reduce all of our expenses. And just to let the people know that $1,245,171 over the four years is between 3 and 4 mils of taxes.
Yep.
So, I mean, that kind of puts it in perspective for people, I think, when you see that we have dropped our expenses between 3 and 4 mils.
Yep.
And I thank you very much.
Good for Walker.
Thank you very much.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Yeah, my favorite photo is this whole package.
Yeah, there were.
(inaudible) 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 April's been a very good month this course of construction, spring's melted and dry so far, hopefully may continue to wait. Construction has moved rapidly after being the mud in the muck in the winter, things start to come out of the ground very quickly. Things that have been going on this past month, (inaudible) (inaudible). Kirkner Sons, who's a subcontractor, I'm sorry, Kirkner Sons or GC, they're subcontractors for own sons' concrete, has done all the (inaudible) press spots, blocking, forming, rebar, concrete point that, at the field house, they installed the actual wall and concrete puddings. Really, this is the owner excavation of the site to be able to speed up process of digging and trenching and spilling. They've also mobilized your machinery, subcontractors installed actually a wall, this view here is.
(inaudible)
Sorry, you're fine. That was beginning of April, that's the beginning of construction, breaking, depressed spots, and you'll see as we go on, that's the (inaudible). And that's now, probably a couple weeks ago. Actually, some is closed now, the last three weeks, we've had good weather in our (inaudible). This is Phil, the northern end of the football field, beginning of April. (inaudible) construction. This is why, so we've overexcavated the field house building pad, substantial amounts of rock and limestone, custom contractor removed with their machinery, that allowed the contractors to dig dirt themselves for the undergrounds. This is the north of the football field as of 1st of May. You can see, those are relocated utility poles that are in place in the mountain field that's actually been in place on the north edge, basically extend the width of your football field thirty-something yards. This is concrete, pudding, prep, field house, and rebar, (inaudible). This is getting graded, subgraded football field, this is roughly towards the middle, middle to late April, and the last four or five feet there will be knocked out by beginning of May. Corn concrete field house. This is the cut, the baseball field area, you'll see, we cut it roughly about sixteen feet of earth on that level of field there by the junior high school, and that's what's been used to build the fill at the football field area. As they're working on it, the cutting here is a sheer wall, but when it's finished, it'll be cut back to the (inaudible). So we'll be going, just even that (inaudible). This is the subgrade for the football field, your left is your (inaudible), they test all compaction and moisture content for each layer of fill. (inaudible) that last, that slope being complete to subgrade for the football field. This is the field house, and actually, this is outdated, this is done the 1st of May. This is Marsha Lanier Foundation next to your block on the east side of the field house. Tom Coe putting the undergrounds. They completed probably roughly 75% of the undergrounds, plumbing. They should be completed here by the 20th or the 23rd, since steel started. This is again looking at the field house. That's the buildings of slopes, north of the football field. Alligating city, electrics doing the same thing as far as undergrounds, they're the same completion rate as Wells. Tom Coe around the 23rd for their undergrounds. I put together a kind of time lapse since December, middle of December, December 4th, I believe, to May 9th. I try to take a photo every day, minus weekends, I'm not the best photographer, just kind of jumps around a little bit. Probably do the same time each day. Your bleachers have been fabricated, they're in Texas, I believe, and they'll be shipped here shortly, well, late summer. Case signs are going in now for bleachers as well. I'll continue to take these photos, I like to do something, do something in a project kind of the same. Won't be as fancy as something you see on YouTube or anything, but I'll try my best. Project cost summary, GC Kurtner Sons has requested about $326,000 for monthly billing. That listed, as always, just give you a value of what you're billing for. Site contractors, the custom has requested $225,000 change. No payups from HBC, plumbing, electrical, Alanius Smith, $50,600, and everything else, Smith, or $290,000. A lot of that's restored materials, usually fabricated. Steel is starting to can here the 23rd of May, falling out would be windows and curtain walls, so these are going to be very fast. Hopefully have lots of things to show you on the board retreat on the first, coding tours. The foundation came out last week, but if there's any other sorts of tours or company you want to get together and come out, we'd be more happy to show you around, show you the progress we made. That really concludes our report, I'll keep it short, and as the pins are laying, 2:1 after 1:00. No change orders, this stuff, dude.
Thanks, guys, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our last property planning meeting, minutes from now, arriving on the 16th of August, and our next meeting will be June 6th, the 3rd of May, September 10th. We will have an award treadmill. That'll be part of the agenda next week, or two weeks from now. And we were also putting out the new schedule for paving for LES and Mountain View.
Thank you, Mrs. Cuzar. I'll move to student activities and recreation, Dr. Law. Information items, on May 23rd, 7, will be senior high student recognition and auditorium. May 29th will be spring sports recognition and auditorium, and I do have some playoff updates. Boys volleyball is playing at St. Clair right now, and they have two games to none, and it's the best of the five, so one more and they're good. Boys lacrosse defeated Winchester Christian last night, 11-4, that was down at the stadium. It was really cold, but it was exciting. They play Seton La Salle Thursday at 7 at Dayton. It was their first ever playoff appearance win, the boys lacrosse team. The girls lacrosse team plays Thursday at the stadium here against Blackhawk, and this is the girls winning their first section title ever. The track team travels to Baltimore Thursday for the individual championships, and the softball is a first round bye, and they'll either play the 20th or 21st, and they will play the winner of Climb Richland, O'Peter Township, and they won, they also won their section title. So we've had an impressive spring season.
Thank you, Dr. Cuzar. If Dr. George is not here, there's nothing under committee that you're ready to do, nothing recording. Under the intermediate unit, on your agenda for next week will be a resolution to award bids for gasoline and diesel through the WIU Joint Consortium, and those are listed under item number seven in your packet. The amendments from the WIU Board Meeting held on April 23rd are also, that's also in your packet, item number eight. And the result of the 2013 election of WIU Board members is item number nine, and they are all delineated there for you. That concludes the report of the intermediate unit, and I'll turn it over to DWCTC Joint Operating Committee, Mrs. Cuzar.
Thank you. The summary of our last meeting is item number 10 in your packet, that we have standing on the 20th. This is among the, because the senior recognition, yeah, that's on, senior purpose. It is Wednesday, May 27th, in our auditorium. And the only thing I want to add is that our team, our backlog team did very well in the regional competition at California and California University, and we got second for the 22nd. So now they're coming to Nashville, kind of losing money. Through sponsors and donations and things, Mr. Palmer, very generously gave a very large donation so that our kids could go to Nashville. So thank you, Bill, and, it's a great meeting, the kids always, they like to bring us out to the lobby and show us, show us the lot. But they disarm them, they're no weapon. Run it towards them.
You used the word disarm.
It is disarm. When you told me that thing ran 20 times faster than my lawnmower, it scared the pants off. Oh, they're an Indianapolis, they're an Indianapolis.
Wow.
Of course, yeah, it's very impressive. And the most impressive part, as an adult and as a school board member, is to watch the kids' absolute enthusiasm and excitement over the project. If we could find a way to make every course that we provide our students, get them that excitement, that education, or whatever the content area that we're trying to get them to learn, all of this would be nothing. I mean, these kids would be teaching themselves, these kids are, I mean, they're amazing.
The instructor taught a good job, they're great. Really like the work.
This, this is one of those courses that you just go, how can we apply this to everything? This is impressive, impressive, I wish you all this, you see that?
That's not how they do it, and other things. Board policy, PSD liaison, this is out.
No reports this evening.
Thank you. Transportation, Dr. Law.
Just a reminder, the meeting on the 22nd, a greeting end in the senior high school.
Thank you. Technology, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mrs. May. On the next meeting, we'll have the approving the CCL technologies contract for 2013, 2014. We're in the last year of our contract for those guys, and they've been using them through previous years. There's no price increase, which would say the same, and the contract is renewable yearly. And our next meeting will be June 18th, so we'll be in there.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Thanks.
Superintendent's Regulation, Mrs. Wagner.
Next week, I would, in two weeks, I would ask the board to accept a resignation effective date change for Carol Ray from August 20th, to accept the resignation of the assistant girls soccer coach, Mallory Batson, as well as the recognition, hopefully, for the positions that are listed. The elementary guidance position at Badley Elementary School, and two health and physical education requirements for two retirements. In addition, we are hoping to pass some recommendations to our head girls basketball position and the senior high school cheerleading sponsor and assistant, and the junior high school cheerleading sponsor. We will also ask the board to award tenure to Bridget O'Keefe, who is a learning support teacher at our senior high school effective April 21st. And we will also have a list of on-the-road driver education instructors for the 2013-14 school year for the board to approve.
Thank you. Sixth grade camp dates, Malcom U. S. goes tomorrow, states through Friday. Badley will go Monday through Wednesday, and Lantrell Elementary Wednesday through Friday next week. So I think it's open, if any of you would like to go and visit at sixth grade camp.
Just to interject one thing, just, go ahead, I'll...
No, go ahead, you're all right.
Just, when I was kitting very quickly with Mrs. Sulpis over here, we were talking about the Bonnet Tech School, about the interaction with the kids, the equipment, the teachers, you know, everything that we're dealing with. But that, just a quick statement that Mrs. Sulpis made is, that's why we'll pursue the permit game and the white game. That, that interaction piece is the piece that makes the difference for what they feel in touch and how they choose the course. That's why $226,000 will fall out of the sky, that it's amazing, it's going to be a big impact at that age level at junior high. It's amazing, and you put it like, right there, right now, because I applaud that, it's like that way. It's amazing, that's all, thank you.
Thank you so much. Breakfast of champions is Wednesday, May 15th, that's tomorrow at 7:30 a.m. Well, I think it's because, we threw the test back, because of the kestos.
Yes, we're kestos testing Thursday, Friday morning.
You know, this is the only month I could attend, because I'm always off that Thursday for the chemical school picnic, you know?
Please feel free to join us for the kestos.
Okay, and a reminder about the Adams Memorial Library's spring reception on Friday, May 24th at 7 p.m. There are honoring Carl Ball Moister, so it would be nice to attend that. The district retirement celebration will be held June 6th at 8 a.m. in the senior high school auditorium. And a reminder about our board meetings, there is no board meeting next week, on next Tuesday. Two weeks from tonight will be our next regular board meeting, beginning at 7:30 with an executive session at 6:30. And a reminder about the board retreat on Saturday, June 1st, from 8 to noon, and here in the CSC. And in June, there's a change in the meeting also because of the final adoption of the budget. The committee of the whole will be Tuesday, June 18th, and the regular board Tuesday, June 24th.
We have something. Student activities, I missed that the boys tennis also had made playoffs. So it's one of its on-goings that wasn't on my update list, but they did make the playoff. Anything else to come up this evening? Okay, I thank you for the time, and we are...